Okay, good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody here this morning. We're very fortunate and lucky to have Pastor Dr. Tracy Dawkins-Holly, who has just became pastor of Mount Olive Baptist Church. She's going to come and lead us in the invocation, if we all could stand, and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning. Thank you Chairman Deal and certainly to the entire County Board of Supervisors. It is a privilege to lead you in prayer. Would you bow with me? Eternal and gracious God, the one who is our Creator and the giver of abundant blessings, we thank you, God, for sustaining us throughout 2023 and allowing us to come together on the second day of January to pray for these men and women who you have called through the vote of the people in Culpeper to serve this community. God, I thank you for each of them, and I pray that you would lead and guide their hands and their hearts as they seek to do what is in the best interests of the residents of this great county. God, give this Culpeper County Board of Supervisors wisdom as they contemplate resources. God, give them patience as they reason together. God, give them ears of compassion and understanding as they listen to the voices and the needs of the people. God, give them strength and courage to stand for what is right and just. God, give them joy and peace as they do the work that has been entrusted to their hands. God, I thank you for them. I thank you for their giftedness and their talents and their competence. And God, I ask that you would bless them, protect them, cover them, oh God, during this session. And not only do I pray for them, but God, I pray for their families as they stand by them as they tackle the work ahead. God, I pray for their staffs, and I pray for the people of this entire county. God, cover this building, allow it to be a place of goodness so that in the end, the work will glorify you and it shall be a blessing to your people. This is my prayer for this County Board of Supervisors. In the name of Jesus, I pray and give thanks. Amen. Amen. God bless you.
Thank you, Dr. Holly.
Thank you.
I'd like to officially call to order our Board of Supervisor meeting for the morning session for January 2nd, 2024, and welcome our new board member, David Lee. Welcome aboard, sir, and I ask you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as one.
Okay. First up is the organizational, this is an organizational meeting, and the election of the chairman, and I'll turn it over to our county administrator, John Ayrston.
Thank you, Mr. Deal, members of the board. This morning, I get the pleasure of calling for nominations for our chairman for calendar year 2024. So at this time, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for that position.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Mr. Paul Bates for chairman of the board.
The nomination for Mr. Bates, is there a second to that?
Second.
Are there any further nominations? Have a motion and a second to close the nominations. All in favor?
Aye.
And all those in favor of Mr. Bates to serve as the 2024 chairman? Mr. Bates, I'm turning it back to you.
Well, that said, thank you. Just first off, want to wish everybody a happy new year and 2024, and I would like to extend a huge thank you to all of my colleagues for the trust that you've shown by this nomination and appointment to chairman. I'll do my best to serve in the best capacity I can. That said, I would like to also thank Supervisor Deal for his leadership over the past four years as chairman of the Board of Supervisors. For my first four years on the board, I think there's been a lot of accomplishments throughout the county, and the kudos goes to the staff and all the board members and the togetherness we have in getting things done. With that said, the accomplishments for 2023 are great, but we also have a lot of challenges and hurdles coming forward in 2024, and I hope we can continue the relationship that we have on the board. It's a lot to be done, and a lot has been done. So again, thank you to everyone. With that, we'll move on to item 1.05, which is the election of the vice chairman. And again, I will open the floor for nominations for vice chair.
Make a nomination for Supervisor Durr as vice chair.
Okay, we have a nomination for Supervisor Durr, and we have a second. Any other nominations? We'll close the nominations. All those in favor of Supervisor Durr as vice chairman signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Durr, on vice chairman. Look forward to working together. Moving on to item 1.06, the board will consider approval of the 2024 Rules of Procedure and the 2024 Regular Meeting Calendar. And that, I'll turn that over to Mr. Ayrston.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This morning, as part of our organizational meeting, we always adopt the 2024 calendar and also rules of procedure. The rules of procedure that are posted on board docs are basically, or they are the 2023 Rules of Procedure with no changes proposed at this time. And the 2024 calendar was prepared by our deputy clerk and maintains the current schedule that we have of first Tuesday meetings at 10:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. So if there are no changes, we'd like to have those adopted this morning. If there are changes, certainly you're free to discuss those today.
Mr. Chair, I'm not going to suggest changes for this year, but for the future, it may make sense, so maybe next year, to look at the electronic meetings part or just what it means in terms of quorum and person and then the participation of two meetings electronically per year, et cetera, and make sure that we're updated relative to all state code and applicable statutes. Otherwise, a move for approval updating with the date.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Rules of Procedure and 2024 calendar as presented. There is a note for to discuss electronic meetings in the future. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the item 2.0 on to our agenda. We have an agenda before us. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask the board to consider two deletions to the agenda. Under item 4.02, which was going to be our annual audit report, Mr. Foley's unable to be here today and would like to come in February. And under portion 10, closed session, item C, that no longer is necessary, if you'd like to delete those two items.
Move for approval with the deletions as suggested by the county administrator.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with the deletions of 4.02 and item 10, paragraph C. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Carries. Item 2.02, we have a consent agenda before us, and again, I'll turn this over to our county administrator for bringing this to us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll read the four items on consent this morning. Under item A, the Board of Supervisors will approve a resolution of appreciation for Peter McCarskey. The resolution will be presented during the evening meeting to thank him for his years of service on the Human Services Board. Under item B, the board will consider acceptance of a donation and a budget amendment in the amount of $1,500 for the Animal Services Department. LaBarre and Rescue and Sanctuary made this donation and has requested these funds to be used for veterinary services. Under item C, the board will consider acceptance of a donation and a budget amendment in the amount of $5,000 for the Parks and Recreation Department. The donation is from Big Man Foundation to go toward the cost of AED units at the sports complex. And under item D, the board will consider acceptance of a donation of a 2012 Ford E-Series cargo and passenger van to the Parks and Recreation Department. The vehicle is valued at $6,926 and was donated by the Rappahannock Rapid and Regional Commission.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign? But we're approved. Item three, we have the approval of the minutes for the December 5th, 2023, 10:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. meetings. Are there any additions or changes to the minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
And a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Moving on to our general county business. We have two items on the county business. First, item 4.01, the board will discuss and consider approval if the fiscal year '24 local government agreement with the VDH and will also consider approval allowing VDH to roll forward unspent prior year funds. And with that, I'll ask John to introduce these items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Received correspondence from the Department of Health regarding the FY '23 year-end settlement process for the Health Department. That resulted in $18,639.68 of unspent funds that could be returned to Culpeper County. Alternatively, the Department of Health has requested that the county allow them to roll that surplus into their FY '24 budget, which they would intend to use for improvements to their client reception area. And secondly, the standard VDH FY '24 allocation was received by VDH from the state. The allocation was approved at the anticipated amount and is in line with the board's approved local match. So this morning, the Health Department's requesting that we consider doing two things. One, authorize VDH to roll forward those unspent funds in the amount of $18,639.68, and two, to authorize the county administrator to sign the FY '24 local agreement. And Dana McClelland with VDH, I thought would be here, but I don't see her, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions for staff?
No questions for staff. Do have a couple of comments. So one, just it's important for us to realize, which I'm sure we do, that local health is the responsibility of the Board of Supervisors. And in fact, if we don't name someone to be director of health, we are the health board. We can name someone, or we can contract it out to the state. And we, like most localities, do contract it out to the state. In terms of there being a formula, for years, we pay 45% of the cost of the Health Department. The reason we pay 45% is because the state law says we have to pay a minimum of 18% and a maximum of 45% based upon a formula. And it's just been stuck at 45.0000, actually 0012 this time, so we're slightly over, but rounds to the nearest dollar. At some point, it may make sense for us to look at all of the stuff that we, I guess, outsource to the Health Department and see if there are certain standards of quality that we would like. So right now, the standards are minimum state law. And sometimes that works well, and sometimes it doesn't. Long-term, us getting something a little more formal may make sense. And then, for some reason, we approve this contract in January each year for a contract that begins on July 1st of 2023. So what we're approving actually began more than six months ago. And I understand that we don't know the funding amount until things close, but that can be separated from the approval of the contract. And the reason that would be important is because the contract provides for a 60-day out. So unless we notified the Health Department prior, well, 60 days prior to July 1st, 2024, that we wanted out, we're stuck for the next year anyway. So we're stuck here, even if we didn't want this contract. That said, I'll move for approval.
Any other comments?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to item 5.0, old business. We have one item of old business. The Board of Supervisors will consider awarding a contract to Loudon Building Systems to renovate the lower level of 155 West Davis Street for the magistrate and juvenile probation offices. And with that, we'll turn that over to Mr. Howard.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We issued a bid to renovate the lower level of 155 West Davis Street. It was formerly occupied by the Extension Office and intended to put the magistrate's office that was formerly housed in the jail, currently operating out of Orange County downstairs, and to relocate the juvenile probation offices, which are currently on the second floor of that building, without any aid, access down to that lower level. We received the five bids that are included in your package and included three add alternates that we'd like to include with this contract award. The first add alternate would be to replace both of the boilers that are down in the basement that were installed back in 2001 that have entered the end of their service life, which is additional $44,000. Add alternate number two was to enclose a office within the magistrate's office suite for the regional magistrate, which is currently over in the basement of Giles Miller Building. And add alternate number three was to upgrade an existing electric panel that we'd be connecting into for the renovations. We recommend awarding the contract to Loudon Building Systems for $508,500. That would include all three add alternates. We have $208,000 that's currently in the CIP for this project and request transferring $300,500 from the general fund. The finance director's requested, if this is approved, to do it in two motions. One would be to award the contract to Loudon Building Systems for $508,500 and approve the budget amendment of $300,500. The second action item would be to do a budget transfer, which would simply relocate the $200,000 that's in the CIP in the GL for additional county office space into a GL for the renovation project. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, sir. Any questions for Mr. Howard?
Okay, I'll make the first motion that we approve the bid of the slightly more than $500,000 and the budget amendment of slightly more than $300,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I guess next, we'll make a motion that we make the two modifications to the GL as recommended by the finance director, one being the slightly more than $200,000 from the, into an improvements fund, and then moving another $300,000 from the general fund, 300,000, well, slightly more than 300,000 from the general fund into the improvements fund.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to new business, item 6.01. The board will discuss and consider a request for funding to assist with operational cost of the Culpeper Heat Shelter. And again, I ask our county administrator to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll kick off the discussion and then ask Mr. LeGraff to come up. But the county has historically had a heat shelter during the winter months, and this season, Encompass Community Supports, formerly known as the Community Services Board, agreed to operate that heat shelter. I think the volunteers, just there weren't enough to staff and man it. So Encompass took on the role, stepped up, and opened the shelter on November 24th. And while they do still remain using volunteers for some of the meal prep and other functions, they are paying staff to keep it open. So they have a budget of some $337,000. Again, it's already open and operating, but they are far short of having that number in their coffers, so to speak. And Mr. LeGraff approached me about approaching the board for some type of contribution to help offset their shortfall. And with that, I'd say, Jim, anything else you want to add or share?
No, I appreciate it. Thank you. I appreciate your hearing our request. As you are aware, the heat shelter opens in November. It will be running till the end of March. It was not our intention to do that this year, but frankly, there was not another opportunity for another organization to pick this up this year. And I think it was, you know, clear that we needed to get people off the streets. It is running different this year, I think, than in past years. I think most importantly, what we've been able to do differently is to bring in other resources. It is our goal that when people come into the heat shelter now, that they are meeting with case managers. We are attempting to enroll them in benefits. They're getting signed up for UVA financial aid to lessen the burden on the hospital and some of those other resources, so that really we can start identifying who these individuals are better and frankly, to plan for the coming years and what we're going to do. So far this year, we have served 36 people in the shelter. Of those 36 people, I think just a couple really interesting things. 21 are directly from Culpeper. We've, three people are from Falkir, one from Madison, three from Orange. Two people are actually from out of state. And then, just a mix of kind of one-offs, you know, one person from Charlottesville City, one from Prince William. So it is predominantly individuals who are from Culpeper or who would be here, whether that's their home county or not, that are being served. For those other counties in our five-county region, now that we have some information on where people are coming from, we are also reaching out to their Board of Supervisors for some proportional support as well. I think also very interesting, to me anyways, is we are seeing the people who are using the shelter are much older than I would have anticipated. Almost half the people who are using the shelter now are 55 years of age and older. So I think that really kind of changes some of our ongoing plans for the future. You have a copy of our budget. We are continuing. That request that I sent John is a little outdated. Since that point in time, we've received some, the Health Department has stepped forward and is paying for all meals going forward. So the cost of meals will be covered by the Health Department through some grants that they were able to achieve. We're still waiting for some final numbers on a grant with the Regional Commission. We are continuing to work with the local churches. Dan Carlton of Culpeper Baptist has been extremely helpful to in reaching out to other congregations for us as well. So it is our goal to fully fund this by the end of the year, but that's my request to the board to help us as well. And happy to answer any questions that any members of the board may have.
Jim, when we're talking the 50,000, is that a one-year, a one-time? You're looking for a one-time donation? Or is this something that we're going to be looking at every year that would be?
So, that is a really good question, Chairman. So this is a one-time request to get us through this cycle of the heat shelter. Again, this was not something that we intended to do in our budget process. It's not in our mission as an organization, but I think was a real community need. I think what our goal is, is to be able to present to, whether it's this board or in partnership with LISA and the Department of Social Services and other members of our community, is what is the permanent solution to homelessness in our community? I'm not ready to say what my proposal would be for that. I think as we are seeing, I honestly thought one way when we started this process, that creating a year-round shelter model that would incorporate some vocational training and some of those other types of resources and was probably going to be the way to go. I think when we are seeing such an older population that I originally thought we would see when we started the shelter, I think we have to think a little differently for the coming years. So this is a one-time to get us through this period, but will allow us to come forward with what a permanent plan would be.
One other question. You've mentioned the 55 and older, which is very concerning to me when we talk about the older population in the county. I know in the past, there's been some outreach to foothills housing and some programs that are run by the Regional Commission. And it's my understanding that a lot of foothills are directing people to call the churches. And that doesn't seem like that's a real sustainable solution going forward. And I'm hoping come in March that we can put in play a model that will work, that is not enabling, but is helping these people get out of the hole that they're in. But when we talk about the older demographics, affordable housing, I think, is something we really need to focus on a little more.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if all board members are aware, but we actually run a affordable senior apartment complex here in Culpeper called Leaf Lane. It is a 24-unit, low-income, affordable, older adult project. Last time I knew, our waiting list for that project was 70 individuals. And there's 23, we rent 23 units, one unit is an office for us. So there's a huge need for older. So I do agree with you completely that I think as we are looking and developing a plan for the years to come, figuring out some options that really are targeting some of our older adult population are going to be critical. And then, I think if we are able to effectively look at that population, I think it really makes the number of individuals who are younger and homeless much more manageable for some of the other organizations in town potentially to be able to manage. I think as it stands now, there's no one else in town who can manage, you know, 30 to 40 homeless individuals outside of us. But if we are able to come up with some housing options for those older adults, they might be able to use some of their additional or in current programs and services to manage a much smaller number.
Mr. LeGraff, I think if you would set the table and explain last year's situation, the dilemma that the heat shelter was in and the urgency of that situation last year, and explain why you're here today would really help the board understand why you're asking for money.
Okay, so as, just for information for members of the board, we have never run a heat shelter before. You know, we are a housing authority which helps with low incomes and people who have been hired a place, and some of those support housing models. The heat shelter has historically been run by St. Luke's, who have done it through volunteer basis. During the COVID years, the congregate heat shelters were no longer allowed. And there was a lot of federal funds to allow people to be housed in area hotels. And so the last three seasons, through the Regional Commission, through foothills housing and some other groups, individuals who are homeless were housed in local hotels. That money has ended. St. Luke's came forward. St. Luke's came forward maybe five, six months ago and said, due to the size of their congregation, excuse me, the changes in the individuals who are now homeless, whether they are younger with increased behavioral health, mental health, substance abuse needs, they were no longer able to find volunteers to run a homeless shelter or a heat shelter, that they were not going to be able to do that. Another organization in town who runs a much smaller family shelter came forward and said that they would be able to run the heat shelter this year. Unfortunately, kind of at the last minute in August, September, there was not any advancement in their ability to make this happen. So as a community, we were left with no heat shelter. And so that's when our organization got involved and said, as we had been a partner in some of the discussions that have been happening locally, if the current provider is not able to do it and the other organization in town that said they were going to do this heat shelter were not able to do it, we would, in consultation with our board, our board said, do what you got to do, people need help, can't have people on the streets, winter is coming. So we, that's how we kind of stepped forward and got into this mix. So we agreed that we would open the heat shelter during the same hours as this year. We worked very closely with St. Luke's to rent their space. By renting their space, they're also giving us internet access, phone services, we're using all their materials and all that type of stuff. So we labeled it in the budget as rent, but includes much more than those types of services to use their location. We knew the volunteer base to run a heat shelter just does not exist. And there are just too many concerns in this day and age with, you know, people spending evenings and nights and weekends with some, like I said, with some of the behavioral health concerns of some of the people in the heat shelter. Additionally, it was important to us as an organization that if people were coming into the heat shelter, it wasn't come in at 5:00 at night, leave at 8:00 in the morning, and be back out in the community, which is where we often were, you know, we would get phone calls if someone was homeless, they were in a local store, a local restaurant, they were creating a disturbance. And so we made the decision to run, excuse me, the heat shelter for 24/7. But most importantly for us too was working with DSS, our housing staff, with some of the other resources in the community to really help individuals get connected to supports and services. We got to get these people engaged in some manner and get them some help and help work with them to get off the streets. But unfortunately, you know, as we all know, hiring people is expensive. So that's why I'm here.
A couple of questions. One, how long has the heat shelter existed?
Boy, I'm going to look at Lisa Peacock for that one, for years.
Okay. Early, so roughly 20 years. Okay. And then two, do you have enough people? I saw 10 staff in the budget. Do you have the 10 staff, or do you need more, and what do you pay?
So we are managing with the staff. It takes for a 20, the 10 staff is the 24/7 times two, you know, just kind of roll it out, right? You know, just an hour breakdown. We have not been able to hire 10 full-time staff, but we've been able to hire a lot of part-time staff. So we have a lot of staff either externally, who had been previously engaged with the heat shelter, who have come on board to pick up some shifts here and there. Internally, we have staff who've picked up overtime shifts as well. So we're able to cover the needed hours that are there. Our salary is $20 an hour for working at the shelter.
Great. Thank you. I'd like to say thank you for stepping up and fixing this situation for this year. But my question is, what's the planning process for as we go forward? And how do we not get into kind of an emergency patch next year?
Well, I think the first step in the planning, I know there is a forum that Lisa Peacock with Department of Social Services is hosting January 22nd to start the discussion. I think it is, there is a group that has been working on it and with support from Patrick and the regional commission and the foothills housing network. You know, and I think honestly, we thought there was a provider in town who said they were going to do this. And our involvement came when at the last minute was determined that they were not, they just didn't have the capacity to do it. I think when we start closing up the shelter in March, we will have a really good understanding of who these individuals are, where they are truly coming from, and will give us a much better sense of how we have to plan and prepare for any coming years. I will be honest, if we want to look at the idea of a regional multi-county, 24/7, 365 day a year shelter proposal, that's going to be an expensive model. There is not a lot of external funding for those types of models. I've had conversations with our five county, well, most of our five county boards of supervisors informally about, you know, their willingness to participate. I think there is some participation willingness, but it's going to be proportional to kind of the numbers of people that they see. You know, Madison County and Falkir, they just don't see the huge number of people. Culpeper seems to be where our homeless population is congregating. So I think in the spring, in early spring, we will have those discussions. Summer, I don't foresee us having a viable option, but we'll have those conversations in the spring so we can have a plan for the coming fall and winter. But I do think, looking at it a little differently, about what can we do from a housing side, particularly for some of the older people that we are seeing is, again, very first blush, very early in this process, but really seeing if there are avenues that we can target that population. And then really working with some of the smaller providers in town who do this type of work, who just did not have the capacity to take over this big model at this point in time would be critical.
I have a question. Have you gone to the town council with a similar request?
I have gone to the town council. They're waiting for your vote today. So I will go back to, we all know they came out, go back to them, they'll come back here. So.
You mentioned that there were some adjustments since our information was prepared in the packet. What would the request be, or how much would you need based upon the adjustments?
Oh, I'm still well short. So I would still ask for the $50,000 support from here. I still am going to be $100,000 short minimum this year that we will continue to, I have until June 30th to find the rest. I think, you know, our local foundations, Culpeper Wellness Foundation has really stepped up with a lot of support. DSS, I appreciate, we will continue to work with lots of the local clergies. They've often done special offerings and those types of things to help the heat shelter. I will say, one of the things that has been very, very encouraging is when we put out the care calendar, which is kind of an online resource that you can go on to volunteer or to prepare a meal, the care calendar is almost full till the end of the year. So I think what this has really done in a lot of respects to is brought back organizations that prior to the pandemic were involved and supportive, but went away for whatever reason. But if you have a group, whether it's a civic group or a religious group that wants to make a meal, it's almost hard to find a date now to come and support the heat shelter, which is really nice. So.
Jim, I have one last question. When we talk about the number of homeless that are coming from other counties, with the services that we're offering and with this heat shelter, I mean, is that, do you feel that's a draw that we're bringing? I know at one time there was, I understood that there was a lot of homeless from Falkir that were actually given transportation vouchers to get to Culpeper. And again, you know, I want to help as many as we can, but I don't want to have a sign saying, you know, this is the place to come, that we're, you know, if you understand what I'm saying.
I understand completely. And I have not seen where that has been an issue. Again, if we take Falkir, Falkir, we have three individuals currently who reside in, who list Falkir as their home county. Again, they're homeless, so it's really a little bit of a challenge with some of that type of stuff. I frankly, I think it's really effective as well is we have, the DSS director in Falkir County actually sits on our board, and we've had those discussions with people of Falkir County. We've also had those discussions with Madison County. So I'm not, we are not seeing other counties dumping into this county, which I think is critical. And I honestly, I think the others who, that we are seeing, you know, the out-of-state people, and they're just passing through, and are homeless and are, for whatever reason, got stuck here. And so they've had a place to get off the streets.
Any other questions or comments from Mr. LaGraff? Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
With that, any further discussion? Or we'll entertain a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to just express my support for the county making a contribution to Encompass for the heat shelter. I have volunteered at the Culpeper Heat Shelter, also volunteered at the Winchester Heat Shelter, and I can tell you from experience, it is a tremendous logistical undertaking when you consider all the things that have to be done to take care of even 10 people, beds and bedding, food, coffee, limited medical care, security. It's very difficult to find volunteers, as Mr. LaGraff pointed out. And that's just running on the 5 PM to 8 AM model. Encompassing is often something of much greater significance and is a much more helpful model for our citizens that are homeless currently, to staff that 24/7, to provide caseworkers, to try to give our folks that are homeless a long-range plan with their lives. It's just a tremendously improved model than the volunteer model. So I would just like to express support that we do make a contribution to Encompass for this very important program that would benefit our citizens so much.
Motion?
If, yes, I can make a motion that we, that we, Culpeper County provides support to Encompass. I'm not sure about the amount, but ideally if they would, if they were requesting $50,000, then I would include that into my motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second.
I have one comment. I would really like to see the town of Culpeper match our donation.
I'll agree with that. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. With that, we'll move on to item 7.0, our committee reports. And first up is our Public Works Committee, and I'll turn that over to Supervisor Underwood.
Thank you, sir. First up, committee brings forward a motion that the board of supervisors send a letter of support for designating Route 3 as a quarter of statewide significance to the Commonwealth Transportation Board. I do need a second.
Discussion?
I did have one question. As far as corridor statewide significance, was there any obvious benefits or anything that would come about from that being designated?
Supervisor Gugino, we looked at that, and Mr. McLaren's a little more familiar than I am, but I think he can wave his arms if this is wrong. But everything we found, there was no impact on property owners or anything that we could find that was a negative. As far as the positive goes, it is a checkbox in a smart scale application. If in the future, we might apply for some smart scale funding, it could help us, being completely honest, we don't think it'll help us a lot, but we don't see any drawbacks to supporting the effort.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? Questions? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
All right. Next, Buildings and Ground Committee. I happen to sit in for that one also. The committee brings forward a motion that the board of supervisors accept the offer of a donation of a parcel of land to the county. The parcel is identified as Tax Map Parcel 43-22B2 and contains .0321 acres located adjacent to Lynn Park.
Second.
Discussion?
I would just note that there are no conditions attached to this. There were other members that had wanted to make sure that was clear.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is Rules Committee, and there were no action items for rules. Moving on to item 8.0, our Economic Development Director's report, and that will be Mr. Rothmel will give us the latest update.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Happy New Year. For those that follow the holiday song, it's eight maids milking, and if you are looking to hire eight maids, we have a solution for that that we'll go through in the presentation. In the strategic plan, this will accomplish goal 1.3, strengthen workforce pipeline to prepare residents for 21st century jobs, including promoting Culpeper County Public Schools and our other workforce development programs. Want to talk to you about workinculpeper.com. Currently, we have employers looking to hire entry-level employees. It is not a great system, and this is probably true across America. Same thing for employees looking for a job. There's many places you can go, there's many places you can look. There is no single point of contact for a community. And with that, looking with the Career and Technical Education Department at Culpeper County Public Schools, as well as a goal that I have had since coming here, want to try to find a way for that market specifically. Solutions unfortunately are costly, administrative prohibitive, very confusing sometimes, and or can be altogether, all of those. With workinculpeper.com though, we think we have a solution that is a simple, cost-effective way to market for this. The website, which the abbreviation WINC, we pronounce as Winc, does not contain any employee information. It just includes the employer information, and then as you click Apply, it goes to wherever the company wants that link to go to. So if that's their own company website, if that's their Indeed page, any of those options, it'll go directly there, and the employee will fill out the information just as the employer wants. We will not keep any information. That was a huge issue as you're trying to figure out a solution that we needed to avoid. We were able to. People that are going to the, businesses that are going to the C-Tech job fairs will be required to post their jobs first on Winc. So that way, students will know where to go, they need to go to Winc, and then from there, they'll see the employers. The goal is to make Winc as ubiquitous to entry-level Culpeper jobs as Handshake is for universities. If you've ever currently tried to hire a graduate of a local university, you have to go on Handshake. The students only look on Handshake, and the employers are only on Handshake. It's amazing. Internships, all of that for universities, local universities go through Handshake. So that's what we're, that's kind of the model we're trying to implement. Job postings can be full-time, part-time, or internships. The companies that are Culpeper-based are automatically featured with top postings. One issue with partnering with the schools is that they do have people that participate in job fairs that are not necessarily Culpeper-based. So to help with that from the effort that we're bringing to it, we're able to put them top billing. DED staff will approve company and job postings. Once a company applies to be on the website, we approve that, and as they post jobs, get an email, and it's a quick approval just to make sure everything is fine. The administration of that's pretty light. And then job postings have ending dates, and they automatically disappear as the ending date happens. So it's not like I'm going back in to make sure that we're keeping everything current. The solution was cost-effective and easily implemented. We're able to do this as an add-on for another product that we needed at a discount. And then these are logos. And then these are logos.
Yes, got some questions. Did you approach handshake to see if they would expand to what they're doing?
The, we did not. This cost was so advantageous, it would have been difficult, I think, for any, any other administration or any other for us to go to. And I think hand, one thing with handshake is it would be probably pretty broad, where this, we were trying to make something that we could easily control. With these developers, I'm already, for example, the featured employer for the Culpeper, that was a product they did, that was a feature they didn't have in their product, and they were able to add that for us.
I'm not looking as much for the cost. My concern is best practices and effectiveness, meaning handshake has become dominant because they have a model that works. My suspicion is, and I don't know, first time I've ever heard a handshake, but my suspicion is they do store PII, or Personally Identifiable Information. And the reason I suspect that they may, and it may even be through a third party, so it may be through a widget, like a Chrome widget, et cetera. The reason is you need to be able to effectively fill out a lot of stuff quickly. And if you got to enter your name every time and your address every time, that's not as effective as if you can just go ahead and apply quickly. So are, how easy is it going to be to use? And are you looking at the best practices of those that do well in the private sector in this area?
I think at this point right now, we need to, we're trying to get our arms around the issue, get people into one solution. This is a year-to-year contract, so we were able to see how this goes in this first few months. And then from there, of course, always adjust.
Thanks.
Brian, real quick, the, these different sites that you can go to, so if I was an employer, I would go to the Culpeper Economic Development website, I mean, to the county website, or is, I mean, how do the?
They would go to workinculpeper.com.
So.
Or they can email me.
I guess going forward, there's a lot of programs that we're starting to come up with that I think that would be best served if there was a central location that you could go to, meaning maybe the county website, that you could click on these different links to take you to these places so people know where to find this information.
That's a good foreshadow for my February update.
Okay. That sounds great. Don't want to get ahead of myself.
We are, yes, there's a lot of infrastructure building that I've been doing in my time here. We are getting to a point where we are running with the programs that needed to be implemented. But yes, agreed, our economic development website is in the process of being much more robust for that.
Great news. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, 9.0 is our Administrator's Report, and I will turn this over to Mr. Eggersen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really nothing too earth-shaking this morning, just a reminder to everybody that the newly-elected chairman will be appointing the various standing committees for 2024, hopefully in the next couple of days. We would normally have a committee meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, and I suspect that's still possible, but I don't currently know of any pressing items, so I wanted to gauge the board's thoughts on perhaps delaying the next committees until February.
If I happen to still be chairing Public Works, I see no reason that we need to meet.
I can say the same for rules.
And I'll go ahead and fill in, even though I won't be chair and don't want to be chair of Buildings and Grounds. I will say that from what I saw in the past, that we don't have anything there either.
If that's okay, then we'll plan on taking next Tuesday off. Thank you. That's all I have this morning.
Thank you, sir. And with that, let me pass those down. Entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we enter into closed meeting as permitted under Virginia Code annotated Sections 2.2-3711A1346 to discuss and consider citizens' appointment to the Agricultural and Forestal District Advisory Committee and the Towing Advisory Board; two, the potential purchase of real property located in the West Fairfax District where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position, negotiating strategy, and financial interest of the board; three, the resignation and salaries of identified public employees/officials; and four, the annual performance reviews of the county attorney and county administrator.
What I would note is. Yeah, we can delete number three from that.
Three is, yeah, three is deleted. Excuse me.
Yep.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're in closed session. Thank you all.